You're watching a Fact TV presentation of the town of Swansea.
Okay, it's 5:30. I'll call the meeting to order.
I'll make the motion that we approve the minutes for a regular meeting on June 19.
Motion made and seconded. Any further on those? All in favor say aye. Aye.
Motion for non-public meeting, June 19, 1 and 2.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Consent agenda.
I'll make the motion to accept the consent agenda.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Public input.
Mattson first. I have something. Something I spoke to Bill about briefly. I don't know if this would fall under noise burdens or not, but the jay breaking, e-braking that you want to call it, it's somewhat excessive sometimes. As far as where you live, close as I live, I'm not sure if you hear that truck coming down the hill at 3:00 or 4:00 in the morning, almost every morning, five days a week. And it just seems like he just breaks from the fairgrounds all the way to the circle and just gets louder and louder. I think probably on any main road that trucks travel, there's a curve, there's a reason for them to slow down. It's just, brrr, brrr, brrr. So, I don't know if there's anything that has to be done. I know some towns do have ordinances against the jay breaking totally. I know that's something that Swansea would consider. Certainly as a petition item, I don't think it'd be very hard to get signatures. But also I mean to compromise with the immunity thus to dawn, you know? So, I think some items I'd like the board to consider amongst themselves and certainly wherever I can be with the house.
Is it actually the jay break coming in here when he lets off the gas pedal, come brrr, brrr, brrr?
I don't know how that should be.
I think it's supposed to be more right.
It's an exhaust brake. The exhaust system, it's a safety thing for them because it helps slow down so they don't heat up their brakes. One of the issues, and it gets brought up all over the country, one of the issues, a safety issue, because if they're not using their engine brake, they're heating up their other brakes, and when they lose their brakes, they won't stop.
So, you're saying if that guy hit his brakes, that noise would be lower?
If they're not using, when they let off the throttle, the exhaust brake kicks on and it gets that loud noise, which is helping repay the truck's speed down, so everything is not relying on the solid brakes.
Joe, I never hear any of your trucks doing that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, look, we're talking, you know, actually stealing and stealing miles and out and coming down.
Maybe this is over in 12.
It's also from the fairgrounds, it's also a 30 mile an hour speed. So, they shouldn't be really have a need for that, to really have that degree of looseness. It's totally looseness. It's a quality of life issue.
May I interject? If you mind if I interject, because I had the same issue when I called the state.
Yeah.
And the state said there is no law to prevent engine braking, and then from the state.
From the state.
Yeah. There is no law, because we had the same issue in our neighborhood.
I think then it must be controlled at the town level, because like I said, you see it in communities where it's clearly marked no engine braking.
Thank you.
No, thank you guys. We're through.
Well, Michael, after our conversation, Michael is researching, kind of short notice. And it's been brought up before, I think before the roundabout. Firespace gym advisory committee. Looks like a pretty good diverse group.
A few more, a few more names to add.
Cheese. Here we go.
So, I had Scott Self, Mark Spalera, Ken Greatbatch, Bob Smith, Brian Rogers, Bob Mitchell, Keith Bell, and Sherry Matson.
All those to add is from what we've done.
Some powerhouse group here.
Oh, no, I'm asking to add them.
Point of origin is Holker. What was the last name?
Sherry Matson.
Sherry.
Where are we at, like 15, 20?
We'll let them find it out on the E-board, or?
Yeah.
So, we don't want to give them any direction on that.
I think we should attend to meeting. I'd like to suggest Jay is the chair.
Jay Ward.
Ken Greatbatch isn't on the list you put out.
Was it Tanny on that?
No, these are some of the people. These are the ones. Kathy is hurt.
Yeah.
So, what do you mean by people have lost some of their authority in the board?
Figure out who's got the time. Most of the people I talked with don't feel they have the time.
So, he managed to let them take the executive board out of them people, right? And who would do that? The chair?
I think they would do it collectively. Ready for a couple more?
Couple more besides those?
Well, do you have these?
I have. I just added those.
Yep. Whoa. Those are the ones Bill gave us. These are different.
I have those names that you had.
Bob Smith.
I have. What I have is John Holden, Jim Jazabek, Kathy Berstrom, Jeff Burke, Steve Biddle, Greg Johnson, Joe Harisi, Mike York, Mark LaBelle, Jay Ward, Stacy Goodell, Rocket DeRosa, and Deputy Fire Chief Burke.
Okay, and then Bill just added?
And I just added Ken Greatbatch, Brian Rogers, Bob Mitchell, Keith Bell, Sherry Matson, Scott Self, Mark Spalera.
And everybody you got? All right. Looks good.
But the only thing I see there is we got Burke signing up, but I thought we discussed that we were going to make them mandatory that one of them show up at a meeting out of the four deputies or whatever you call them chiefs. That one of them is going to be at a meeting, so those questions.
We could call it the fire department rep, if you'd like.
I just think it'd be smart to have every meeting have at least one of them show up. They can alternate, so they're not obligated. Because I see Burke signed up, but there's no Matson and the other guys. There were two guys.
Eric has agreed to.
Eric did.
Eric agrees with you.
Yeah, he did.
Yeah, he agrees that they'll have somebody to be.
Fantastic.
In addition to Mike.
I just think.
You're right. Sure. Would you like to make that motion?
The motion is going to be to accept.
To appoint these people.
To appoint these people, yes. I'll make that motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 The ayes have it. Good job. Waterline extension to Valley Creek.
Will we develop that? I would like to suggest we discuss whether Jay, we're in agreement with regard to Jay being the chair.
Either that or they'll mash it out on their own as well.
I don't want to do that.
You don't want to have them, you know, for the E-board, the E-board come up?
Absolutely.
Well, then everybody would come up with a chair. No?
No.
Good.
I feel very strongly about that.
Yeah, just tell me why you feel strongly that you would like to see Jay there. Do you just think?
I've observed him.
As a leader of a group.
On his own board and how quickly he came up to speed and how he developed the ability to drive the discussion among board members. Also, the comments that he's made at our board meetings over the last year. I think he has a very reasoned approach. He's very temperate. I think he's very rational. I think he's open to discussing, and I think he's a good leader.
The reason I tend to agree with Bill is because the chair is going to be important on that kind of thing. A chair is going to be really important to have a guy control it and direct it and where to go. So, I agree with you that I wouldn't want to leave it up to just anybody, right?
I think, I think it's our chance to really.
Provide.
Some direction and.
Consensus.
I'm going to go by your judgment on Jay. I don't know him enough to know that, but I respect your thoughts on who you decide. So, I'm going to go, I'm going to agree with you on this.
Thank you. Consensus. Good.
Did you also say that you wanted a first meeting between the select board and the committee?
Yes, I think so. That's, I know I would want.
Say that again, Bill?
That it would be a joint meeting with the board.
The first meeting.
Right, the first meeting.
Yeah.
Just to basically provide the guidance that you gave, which is everything's on the table with some parameters.
Basically, everything on the table with them, and as far as any options that they want to come up with. Is, is it going to be mandatory that one of us, one of us are going to be at one of these things, or we don't have to? It's going to be.
I should, but I think we could if we want to sit in.
So, maybe one of us will once in a while just to sit in. And let me ask one more question. I hate to drag this out, but is it closed now? What if somebody comes late? Because there is a couple of people I noticed on the list that said that they definitely wanted to be on it. Is it closed now? If somebody comes in now, like within this week, are we shutting it down? Are we, by voting, is it shut down? Or is it still going to be something pop on? Because I didn't notice there was a couple of people running on that list. Said, I want to be on that one. You know one of them. And he told you that, right Russell?
It'll be a public meeting when we meet.
Okay, and that's his last chance. That's what we'll tell him. You show up for the meeting, right? Want to do that? You are right with that side.
Yeah.
And then anybody from the public that comes in and wants to provide input.
Okay.
Waterline extension to Valley Creek. Did we get any prices?
Table.
Table.
Jeremiah reached out, but given the time, he wasn't able to get the pricing that you asked for. So, he'd like to be on the agenda for the 17.
Sounds good.
Can I just ask, is Jeremiah planning on trying to do that work himself or seeking with other contractors? I would just recommend that obviously qualifications and references on what he's going to do or.
I think the estimate was probably just installed. Didn't really say who was going to do it.
And the other question I have, so you can be fair, but is there any option of the company that you, I don't, I know how it works at you guys, that you would put any money into with the place that you work for?
Perhaps, but we want to see what the.
Okay, but there was an offer there that you could.
Probably up to the commissioners of the precincts.
I got you.
Would it be worth you writing down until the 17?
Sure. I mean, hopefully I get the.
Or sooner.
Get the estimate before.
Do you have a meeting? Do you have any specific meeting this month?
Yeah. Third. Second one. Third. So, 15, whatever it is.
Did you catch that? If you could get it, if you could get it to slide by the 15, they have a meeting that night.
So, you should wait. You wrote it to slide. Yeah, because you got to get it in the packet, right? The packet's got to go off Friday before the.
It has before.
Just not recently. Harry. Conservation Commission Chair, Sherry Dumbin.
I think we're expecting after 6:00, so I'll see Sherry. We can wait. We got it.
We can wait. We're waiting on the public hearing, sorry. Contract approval? Are we fixed on that? West Swansea Solar Array?
Good, yeah. So, that's the, like you said, solar array at the West Swansea Sewer Plant was a war article this year. It's elected revision through a request for qualification process. It's coming in well under what we projected. So, we're looking at this good authorization to sign the contract, which will allow us to start to get in the schedule, which will discipline the next year for construction. We can continue to seek alternate funding sources, which we are, but I'll be looking to get the board to authorize the overall expenditure and be assigned a contract to get on the schedule.
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Motion made and seconded to authorize the expenditure of up to $400,000 for the solar array at the wastewater treatment plant and authorize the town administrator to sign contract documents with revision energy and sign related grant and loan documents. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The ayes have it. Requested expenditure, Crescent Covered Bridge, tree repair.
Mr. Caruso, do you want to speak to this when you have the bridge closed for the redecking, a couple of trees, kind of?
Yeah, three or four big pines leaning on the bridge, and I figured it was a perfect time to move them out of there so we didn't have one of them fall on the bridge and destroy it, so we're asking to take the bridge funds.
I did consult with the chair, the trustees, and trust fund, since this wasn't directly repair or restoration, it was kind of anticipatory. He felt comfortable with the expenditure. Good expenditure.
Yeah, I think it was a smart move. I went out there to scrap the trees, you know, big pine branches. They were a mess. I think he made a good decision on that.
That wouldn't have mattered. We would have fixed it decking and then one of them would have gone.
No doubt about it. Pretty move. I'll make that motion.
All right, motion made and seconded to authorize the expenditure of up to $3,300 for the removal of hazardous trees from the covered bridges capital reserve fund. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The ayes have it.
Before you move on up that one, just one item I wanted to make the board aware of. So, we got word this week that the Northern Border Regional Commission had what they called Timber for Transit, a grant opportunity in ways to try to use timber products in transportation projects. And we'd hoped to do an application of our own, didn't end up doing one, but Southwestern Regional Planning Commission did. We discussed one of the possible ideas being some kind of a wooden walkway adjacent to the temper bridge, and they're very open to working with us on that. So, they, they were awarded the grant, I think, just under $1 million for feasibility and potential for some construction. So, just another step, and if we build a separate bridge, it could be right where those rivers are, so kind of building that. So, just want to.
Hopefully on the other side.
Yeah, but I think it's going to go on the other side. Shame. You know, I looked at that book.
Because of the cycle.
Yeah, I saw pictures of that. It's one of them in that book that you went to that class. And if you look in that book, I was reading that whole book this morning, and it showed the bridge with the walkway on the side. Then they make a bridge down to the landing, drop in the ground. It's pretty cool. I mean, it would be nice to have over there. We could pull that off. Because you see people walk across that. It's amazing. It's docked, and then you get on the bridge, and then you don't have a lot of room. Safety is terrible for people walking on that.
So, continuing to work on it. No, no B.A. solution, but it's on our.
Requested expenditure, Whitcombe Hall, well repaired.
Joe, you could give the background a little bit more about kind of what caused the situation you were involved as well. Basically, it's vandalism vandalism.
Yeah, the Duwanals in West Swansea have been very active this year, but they pulled the cover off, well, broke the cover. It was a pretty flimsy cover, but they broke it, put a bunch of rocks in it. In order to get the rocks out without risking having them fall down past the corporation, you had to dig down like six or seven feet, use the wash well company, cut off the well casing, were able to successfully remove all the rocks out of there without getting those rocks dropped. Because if they dropped down on top of the pump, there's a risk you can't get the pump out, thankfully.
Which we still don't know.
We, yeah, we still don't know.
Till we have to pull that pump.
Yeah.
Because the one big one hung up on the pit list on the side.
Yeah, and then all the little ones were on top of the big one, but you don't know what went in there ahead of time.
If it wasn't for the pit list.
They were all, yeah. And so, and then I had, at the same time, I said, you know what, we better on the side of caution. I have a water test to make sure things don't make it in there. So, the water test doesn't come back to where you can just put in the well, but the water had issues. So, we had the well functioned out and I got the green light with the water back good. We don't, and the wash well company didn't, so we don't think the kids put anything in there to contaminate the well. I think if most people tested their wells, they'd probably come back with the same results we had, so.
The bacteria.
Yeah, and he chlorinated this whole building. He flushed it in the building. I was out here, and then he let it sit overnight. And then we. Had to do it twice. Yeah, had to do it twice. Yeah.
Anything we could do to protect the well?
Put a new cover on that's very.
Got one on there now.
Put a new updated bolt in. Have to do any cover.
Want to put a big piece of granite over it, a hollowed out?
They got that fake rock over there.
Put a real rock. What type of well is it?
An Artesian well.
Drilled. They got the cover off of the Artesian well.
It was one that was proper. It was the old fashioned metal one that just slips over the top, little set screw nuts. The new one is like when you put the bolts on, it compresses around that steel pipe, so.
They hit it real hard.
Yeah, and they kick it off. But I said, don't put the rocks around it. You know, the kids had the rocks that were right there, right there. But we don't know, the problem is, when we go to pull that pump, we don't know if the rocks, they threw and smelt and they're jammed around. Because you got to figure the pump is just a cylinder hooked on the poly pipe. So, you go to pull that out, right? And it wedges those things. We're going to pop the line up. And then hopefully we got enough of static level of the water, where we can just put another pump on top of the old one. If that's what happens, you know, lower another one, just set it on top of the old one, leave the old one in there.
Otherwise, you're going to get a well re-drilled.
Yeah, and they crush it. It's crazy. Yeah, it hits them crazy over there.
So, I wasn't in the camera line right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's too bad.
They picked up our signboard and moved our, must have been five, six kids, signboard's head, picked it up apparently. So, it wasn't facing the road. They did that a couple of weeks ago. They were hanging all over the legs down there.
Ground field.
Couldn't be great for them to kick in the back door and destroy the place in there. Camera up, we would have bought them if they went to the back door.
Yeah, camera in the area.
Should we let Joe pay for this out of pocket, or should we pay for it?
Not my way.
I think I'll make the motion that we pay. I'll make the motion that we pay for.
Okay, motion made and seconded to authorize the expenditure up to $1,547 for repairs to the well at Whitcombe Hall from the Edna C. Whitcombe Common Trust Fund. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and the ayes have it. April expenditure and revenue report.
Nothing noteworthy since the first one.
Nothing. How are you doing on general assistance?
It has slowed down a little bit, but still, still steady.
Trending in the wrong direction?
I would have to look back.
Reading her report was one thing, but seeing the numbers are seeing. Let's just.
Seeing is believing it. Yeah, I can, I can pry one of my.
Did you have a meeting with?
We did.
And how did that develop?
Like, I still didn't really get the straight answer, but we're working on, working on learning more about what happened.
This is looking at the building?
Yes.
Has it been ongoing?
Nope, it was just a one-time mystery, so. Spoke to another friend that has, that works at one of those agencies, so if they can learn more.
Administrative update?
I included a memo here that we put together today. Joe and I met with Mr. Holler over at the Denman Thompson Highway Bridge. You know, we've been, been kind of identifying that the cost is going to come in higher than we expected in the initial contract. But the initial authorization was for $310,000. We're now looking at the, in the range of $660,000 to $700,000. So, obviously significantly more. Fortunately, we have some decent, decent funds that we can, can tap. So, there's another $133,000 in the Town Bridges Capital Reserve Fund. And then we can allocate some of the FEMA funds that we received from last year's flooding. That's just under $190,000. So, that gets us fairly close. When we have the investment each per unit, the affordable housing grant, we have a little over $500,000. So, I'd like to, can we get a little more info, but if we could approve the money from the capital, capital reserve fund tonight, we can pay the, at least the next bill, and then we'll go to my next meeting and have one more tip of. The Denman Thompson Bridge, the bridge on Denman Thompson Highway.
And we had a site that, out there, we met, so they're on the other side of the bridge, and you know, we were hoping that the other side of the concrete is going to be a metal well. It was fireworks. So, when they bid that project, I'm pressing for a loan to stay, when they bid the project, they asked to make 15% to 30% reclamation at the back. And they gave a price per square foot for a parashow, a price per square foot for, for full reclamation. So, your, most bridges are within 15% to 30% depth failure. We're not even done, and we're over 60% depth failure. So, just to give you an idea how bad the concrete is, and as we discussed, there's no way of telling until you get that asphalt peeled up and started. So, they're pretty confident there are no other issues, and he's actually taking care of some, some joints that he's not going to charge us for, but he feels bad about it. But we were out there today, and basically that other side is the majority of its full reclamation all the way down to the block. It's formed up, and everything's going well. They run the supplier for the joints a little bit behind, but Plan B will be running plates for the school buses, so buses will be able to get out of the bridge by the time school comes back up.
Any state funding for the horse damage that we found there?
I have not reached out yet. We initially applied for state bridging, help fund the repair. The program's been closed for several years, not been able to respond to the application, but I keep planning to see if they have any leftover.
Because at this point, it is a red listed bridge, based on what they found, even though they didn't find it.
Right.
The state inspectors.
I wouldn't hold my hope of hopes up, but it is, it is a matter of research.
Does that still work like that, even though we opened up the doors to do it?
Well, they're supposed to inspect it.
They, they initially inspected it going and redlined it from what, I can't remember the year on. There is an inspection from the state.
Yeah, that's, that's what prompted this over time.
And that's how when I first started working with the engineer, Joseph, that student, Christian Hill, and he's kind of coached me through it. He verifies everything that they're doing is what needs to be done and is doing the other way. But yeah, that was initially redlined. The state's been communicating with the contractor a little bit, but they're, they're not talking about funding. They're talking about, they want some inspections or another set of eyes, and coal workers have so much experience, they're all set down now. But maybe worth reaching out to see if there's no funding source, but.
And let me ask you that. That's what prompted, because how would you know?
Yeah, I'll see inspection.
Yeah, because how would you, because the bridge looked beautiful to me, I mean, the building, it didn't look like if they needed you to get it made.
Yeah, when they filled the asphalt up, I was like all excited. Wow, our concrete looks really good. It totally sounded echo, and then they hit it with a jack, and it just really falls apart.
Yeah, the state inspects all bridges every two years.
Every two years?
And they grade various things, the structure, the abutments, and they grade them on one to 10. And when they get, I think, under five, they're under five or under four.
We have to have a plan.
It becomes on the red list, which means they're warning you, like, it might have to be closed. Then they inspect them every year, and it does open up more eligibility for funding, but the program's been so underfunded that they've been accepting new applications. And then, you know, when they're on the red list, you run the chance that any year they could come in and say, all right, you're under, I don't know if it's under two or what.
Shut it down.
They only recommend you shut it down, but you take all liability if you don't.
Is that right?
When it first came on the red list, the options were, they're working with the engineer, discussing with him. The option was to pull up the asphalt to inspect the concrete. And if the concrete's good, you can run up the concrete for two or three years before you do anything else. But if you pull up the asphalt, the concrete's bad, the bridge is shut down. So, I didn't, I opted, I didn't think I did it, because if I would have filled up the asphalt, that bridge would have been closed because we didn't have the funding for it. So, what we did was go work on South Lynch Street. We milled a little bit of the asphalt, put a new coat of asphalt on it to get us through.
And while we didn't get direct aid.
So, when was this inspection? A year ago, two years ago?
It's been, it's been on, it's been on our radar. I think 2017 is when we applied to put it in the program. So, it's been on our radar for several years. Well, we didn't get like a direct, you know, usually they do 80/20, like for municipal managed bridge projects. So, we didn't get that, but we did get several hundred thousand over the last few years in additional state aid that we put in the capital reserve. So, otherwise we would have been, you know, worshipped. So, we did get some, you know, I don't want to give the state credit, but we did get some state funds, so go towards it.
So, what motion are you looking for?
I guess I'd be looking for, I believe, one to $133,000, just $130,000 from the Town Bridges Capital Reserve Fund towards the Denman Thompson, the bridge on Denman Thompson Highway.
What part of the capital reserve?
Town bridges. I keep correcting myself, because I keep wanting to call it Denman Thompson Bridge, but I was, I was chastised.
Tell them Denman Thompson.
It is confusing, so.
So, you're going to take all the money from the capital reserve fund, right?
Yeah.
$133,000.
Yeah, keep the change, so we keep.
That's the motion you want to be made to remove the money from the capital reserve, so we can pay, so we figure out where we're going to get the rest?
Correct.
We'll leave it at 209, so it'll be $133,000.
$133,000. I'll make the motion.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The ayes have it.
Do you think you want to touch on Wilson Pond, do you have?
Oh, sure.
Give it to us.
Very quick. Yeah, so as you know, the water level dropped on Wilson Pond here a couple of weeks ago, and it was due to a fault. Spillway or lower board broke, was draining water out of pond. We were able to make a repair with the hole. We were able to make a repair with the hole. Uh, just getting a lot of levels back up where it needs to be. So that has nothing to do with the construction project up above. If anything, the construction project up above helped because of how much water they've been pumping. Um, I think the, the repair is going to work, I hope it is. If it doesn't, we're going to have to, one way to fix it is to lower the pond, we don't want to do that. But you keep an eye on it, it seems like it's holding up pretty well.
Bottom boy.
Bottom boy.
How many boys are there?
Six and a half.
Stack, like, what are they, like, that two by ten?
Yeah, like five and a half inches, you know, two by sixes.
What I said, and you've got six of them, and the bottom one cracked. And it was just cracked, and the water was pissing.
It broke right open. We were likely, we were able to break it out, lower it down, and then we put a piece of plywood on the outside, but so. It should, should hold, but yeah, water, like I said earlier this year, I found a fish. I did the boards, the water must have raised more of the boards up and up, and a fish got stuck in it, and we couldn't get the board back down.
Is that a keeper?
No.
Just, just the, the bottom board doesn't get pulled in the winter?
That bottom boy never gets pulled?
No, it holds the trash.
It drains the water.
Or they wipe it.
So maybe that's why that was weaker.
Yeah.
But I wonder, yeah.
Make some.
I need somebody to refer to. So when do we change it, when will we get to change it? So when we do that, are we going to change it?
Yeah.
That's when we'll.
We'll go a little bit lower than normal to deal with, but, but we will. Maybe replace the lower board with a piece of panel, we'll see.
So we don't have that though? Because that, you haven't taken up.
No, it holds the trash. So you pull out the trash actions out.
We should just do it in that.
If, if.
Very easy read. All right, it being six o'clock, I'll call a public hearing to order for the Old Homestead Association Bands at the Old Summer Concert Series. Anybody have any input?
Sounds good.
Sounds good, that's great input.
Yep.
All right. If there's nothing further, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, motion to approve event permit number two thousand twenty-four dash fourteen, Bands at the Old Summer Concert Series. All in favor, say aye.
Yeah.
Aye. The ayes have it. Conservation Commission Chair Cherry Domino and member Bud Windsor, sponsoring the board testing the class six portion of Talbot Hill Road. Welcome. You want to sit there at the mic, you can push the button.
Brad, Joe, what if we give them that chair, they both can sit right here? And I'll sit there like that, how's that?
Jeff Lafford is also here, um, with us from the President Swansay Lake.
So what's the name?
Jeff Lafford.
Yeah, I like the anti.
He is?
He is the president of the Swansay Lake Protective Association.
Yes, yes.
So, so far this year. So, um, Swansay Lake had, uh, was lucky enough to get a grant for FB Environmental Associates to do a study of the watershed. And, um, some of the initial findings came back last fall. I voted it to Mike and to Joe, so they could take a look at it. The formal presentation for that, um, what they found is going to be July twentieth. Unfortunately, it's the same day as our home day, but they will be here in Whitcomb Hall. If anybody would like to attend and, and listen to their, um, explanations of what they found. During the middle of their study, we had the flood on July tenth of last summer. And so, um, when they came to, uh, look at the lake, it was probably in the worst shape. Uh, I had seen it, and I, I've lived on Wesho Road for the last forty years. And, um, to give you a good example, in the report, Mike Driver actually made the report as a, you know, something that needed to be, uh, fixed. So, um, but all that silt, all that gravel, all, um, all the topsoil, uh, a lot ran into the lake. And so our concern, and the concern that shows up in the report is, um, the phosphorus loading that we believe will be, uh, increased greatly. And phosphorus floating has always been a problem, um, at Swansay Lake. It, it's reported actually back in the nineties that, um, it was such an issue that they thought that there should be more time on any new development at Swansay Lake. This is back in the nineties. So, um, why we're here is, uh, we would like to do some more sophisticated testing of the, the water quality. Uh, we do test the water every year, but it's, 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 um, not as detailed. And, uh, we're looking for explanations of what has actually happened as a result of the flood and what condition the lake is in and what we can do to remediate that, uh, going forward. Monday, we had a meeting of the Conservation Commission, and at that time we, uh, we thought it was important enough to put some money towards this. They were looking, FB Environmental themselves would suggest that we do the testing. That, that's part of what they do. The price of that testing is roughly seventy-three hundred dollars. And I, that's not the exact, uh, what it's close, uh, seventy-three hundred dollars. And the Conservation Commission, uh, has voted to put up to twenty-five hundred dollars towards that. So I guess we're coming here with a hat in our hand, looking for some help to, uh, to do this more detailed testing that FB, FB Environmental, um, has proposed.
I described in the, um, the letter that you got, um, you know, why we need the additional information about, um, internal phosphorus loading because of the sediment that went into the lake. You know, about fifty-six percent of the phosphorus comes at Swansay Lake, comes from the watershed, things running off, uh, roads and people's lawns and septic systems and stuff. But about seventeen percent, so the second most common, um, addition of phosphorus comes from internal loading, they call it. So that's like the bottom of the lake basically giving off phosphorus. And since we had so much sediment running through the lake last summer, um, they want to kind of get a better handle on what that is contributing to the lake. You know, how that's going to look going forward. So the price was either seventy-three or seventy-six hundred dollars. Was for six, uh, six testing days, uh, from June to October. Now June's already gone, so I, I imagine it might just be five testing days now. Um, so the cost will diminish somewhat. But we felt like, you know, we're, we got, like Bud said, we got lucky enough to get this study. Uh, we were the only lake in Maine that was approved for this EPA. I'm sorry, I was involved in the same study in Maine. Um, so I went through this on Elmstuck Lake in Maine too. Um, but we were lucky enough to be the, the one town in New Hampshire that got this grant last year for this, uh, EPA funded study. So, um, I think this is just sort of going to be an additional, um, small additional amount to invest in, in the lake and the health going forward.
What would the remediation be if it comes back high?
Well, this is what we want to find out from them.
No, forget what the level is. If it comes back high, phosphorus is higher, then pick any number you want. What would the remediation be?
Uh, probably, um, being more, more of a watchdog on reconstruction at the lake, uh, septic systems. Um, Joe, we'll be working with Joe as far as rose salt's concerned. Um, I'm going to put on a workshop on a no phosphorus fertilization program for lawns. There's a lot of lawns around the lake that, um.
Can we do that anyway?
Well, um, yes, yes.
Just to get ahead of it?
Um, yeah, but I, I think it's, what happens is if people don't take this seriously, um, there's a danger of more, of the, the lake not being used as it's currently used. Algae bloom, sinus bacteria, um, all these things that contribute to, um, the degradation of the lake so, to the point where it wouldn't be as a desirable place to be. Um, so, yeah, can we do that anyway? Yes, um, but do we want to put this on the front burner for all the homeowners of the lake, all the people that use the lake? Um, to take this seriously? Because like I said, this has shown up since the nineties and we really, no alarm bells went off, but they should have. But now, since the flooding, I, I really do believe that we're going to find that it's much more of a problem than it ever had been.
I'm just worried if you find out there's not very much, would that then open the floodgate to, don't worry about it?
No.
Instead of just getting ahead of it?
Um, I don't think so.
And I know Wilson Pond has done some things with, what's your program up there with the?
Lake Smart.
Lake Smart?
Yes, Swansay Lake, that's what I, that's where I, um, we're pretty impressed with, see what can happen. And I'm concerned what's happening, it's photoizers, rose salt, uh, exiled, we're starting to get, and we're running off, uh, the way, you know, Swansay Lake there. That was everything coming down into a puddle. My understanding from the testing, it's much more pointed. So if we're, if we're identifying, you know, kind of more troublesome source in this area, in this area, address it. But, um, you know, if you're talking about the constellations, they, unless there's a problem, people seem to ignore all the education they get. Uh, you know, many people know that it's illegal to photograph within twenty-five feet of bodily water. You know, that's tremendous, right? They want their lawn to drain all the way down. Uh, but yeah, it's, it's an education process.
Well, we already have a strict, stricter than the state of the, for the septic systems. And Joe's going to say that probably because of Stirk Road, he's not salting anyways.
Yeah, there's no salting there. Yeah, it's a little bit of the entrance way, but most of that flows below.
And most of what we're talking about right now are external phosphorus sources. Um, and we know we can do a lot about that. We're not sure what you can do about internal phosphorus loading. Um, so they are going to come back with some recommendations, they said, um, based on their findings.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, um, the question that you posed, it was the recommendations. Uh, that's what they're going to talk about at the July twentieth meeting. And I, I know there are about fifteen major recommendations they're making. The, the, the number one problem they found is Talbot Hill Road. And there was a recommendation about wanting to.
Yeah, great.
Yeah.
Just continue.
Just continuing, put in, uh, sort of put it back to nature is one of the things that they recommended. But the question that we all have is, so what are all these recommendations and what, what will we take to do it? Because what's clear from what they said about the findings is the lake is in terrible shape. And they just want to find out how trouble, because they have the, the data from before the flood, decade before the flood and after the flood. So everybody's got the question you posed, which is, well, what's the recommendation? And the big reveal is, you know, July twenty.
But in answer to your question though, as a result of this report, I do see a heightened awareness of people starting to realize that, um, they have to, a lot depends on what they do and how they take care of their properties. You just have to keep on that. So, yeah, and, and as we all know, Swansay Lake, the development there has been, um, it's been pretty incredible the last ten years. There is pressure on that lake, there's a lot of pressure on that lake. And, um, it's a great resource for the towns, a great resource for the, you know, the daycare. Um, it's just an incredible place and, um, it just needs to be protected.
How do you feel, gentlemen?
Well, I, I see the point of, you know, that, you know, the testing and stuff, but what comes after that, what's that lead to? And I know what you mean. And why, why don't we, why don't we, why don't they just react on what we should do? I understand that. And it could go the other way. People that live around there could come back great and then everybody don't care, but we got it made, so.
That's not.
The odds are better.
But actually, Jim, I got to tell you, this, out of those new people that live at the lake, um, there's a lot of interest in testing. There's a lot of interest in doing the right thing. And it could, it could have gone the other way where you get people that don't care. But I see, in the last few years, I've seen a change in that, that attitude, so.
So the big benefit of this whole testing thing too is to make everybody aware and like, look at our tests come back, we all got to step up now. So I think that's your biggest payoff of this testing right now. Because they're not going to go in there and take up the sediment that went in there from the water.
You can't do that.
That don't happen, so there probably, there's probably no.
There's no immediate thing we can do. We just need to know. And then.
So you, you want to spend the money to, to make people aware and say, look, if this is what we got, to get everybody really aware. That's going to be the main thing out of this.
Well, yes, and once we know, what, the more information we have, then you can go after, if they say, well, our recommendation is that you fix X, Y, and Z, then you can go get a grant to fix X, Y, and Z based on the information that you have. We've been doing testing on Swansay Lake for years through the volunteer program. And because of that information, that enabled us to get the big grant that we did for the watershed management plan. So you hope money follows information. That's the ideal.
You know what? This is, this is a pretty stretchy metaphor perhaps, but it's like, somebody went to the doctor and they did a cell scraping. And they said, ooh, you know, the culture came back, looks kind of scary, maybe we should do a biopsy. So when FB Environmental wants to do a biopsy, find out like how bad is it? They already know it's bad.
So what's going to happen on the twentieth?
FB Environmental is going to present all their findings from this year along assessment with watershed.
And you want to be able to say to them, we want to do the testings, uh, for the twentieth?
No.
You want to know?
No.
You don't need to know?
No, it's going to, it's, their, their proposal was to do, um, six different testings, or, once a month, basically, from now till October.
I got you.
And then they'll have that, you know, kind of look at that over the winter and give us some recommendations by next spring.
The, the one thing I'll call for me to do with the study is I could involve that a little bit, some of the recommendations, some of the recommendations are good. Some of who I had questions about, but, you know, the, the talk about Talbot Hill, there's just so much with discontinuing on a class six road and people that are frontage up there. And then the other thing, people keep coming to me about, well, you're going to go up there and do something with it. I've already addressed this with the board. I don't feel comfortable doing anything up there right now. Anything you put in is coming down again. Right now, the, right now, the rain is actually, everywhere there were water bars before from large operation years ago, there are now like six or seven different trenches. And the good thing is water's going to different areas now, not just one area. But anything to be done up there, whether that was going to be turned to a classified road or if it was going to be turned to a freeway, we'd take a full design engineering, closed drainage system and make, would be quite expensive because you can't just go in and fill it in and plant around it.
No, I, I agree, I agree.
Well, so that's, that's kind of the secondary thing we wanted to talk about while we were here. So maybe we could tackle that after we're done with the discussion on, um, on the testing. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm just curious of the purpose for the meeting on the twentieth. If the testing hasn't been done, what, what is it that's going to be presented?
The report is going to be presented.
But there's no report if the testing hasn't been done?
We have a, we have a, we have a report of the watershed, uh, with some of those recommendations, um, that they, that they've presented, uh, to the board, to the Swansay Lake.
They've been working on it for a year. This is a, a whole thing.
Yeah.
It's, um, they've, they've got just a whole list of locations around the watershed that, um, you know, are a problem for runoff into the lake. So they've prioritized all these different projects around the lake that they looked at and said, you know, like Talbot Hill Road, that's like one of the number one priorities for how much phosphorus, how much sediment it's dumping into the lake. Um, so they've got color pictures, there's a, how, I don't know, several, several page report, multi-page report detailing, um, things that could be done. And then, so that's just phase one. Phase two is going to be getting grant money for the implementation, but, um, that's something that the EPA is.
But they're making recommendations on testing that hasn't been completed?
Right, so they, they said, okay, we did all this stuff last summer and we're seeing that there's some holes in our data that, um, because all this sediment dumped into the lake last July. some holes in our data that because all this sediment dumped into the lake last July, we don't really understand what's going on with this internal phosphorus loading. We don't have a full picture of that. We think that, you know, we think that so much is coming from externally being dumped into the lake, but we're not sure how much is coming from the sediments that are already in the lake themselves. So that's what, that's the picture they want to kind of flesh out. Doesn't have a lot to do with this, this July 20th meeting. It's going to be something they'll probably, you know, be able to report to us next spring.
Except that the additional testing is in addition to the work they've done, they're going to report on.
They're going to report on the work they've done. And after July 20th, we'll all get, get that report, we'll all have it to see what, to see all the issues that they've, you know, they've brought up. Some have already been fixed. Joe's already done quite a few, I'm going to tell you the truth. So some were easy fixes and some, like Talbot Hill Road, are not. But they, they do see some things with new eyes that I could drive by every day and not realize it was the issue that it is, so. So anyway, that's why we're here, we're looking for additional funding on top of the 25 million the Conservation Commission voted to, to do for this.
Total cost of $7,300? $600?
$7,600, I think, ish.
Yes.
But it may be less than that because, like we said, we're already in July.
Joe, do you have any open beam applications for funding for any storm damage?
Yeah, nothing that would do that. I'm working on mitigation for East Shore Road for some, for rip wrap on the entire swale on Talbot Hill side of the little...
I just wonder if this could be considered like engineering for what happened from the storm?
I can ask, but I don't think it, from what I saw and listened to mitigation, I don't think, I don't think it's something that didn't cover what I can ask.
The July 20th report might, if they actually spell out Talbot Hill Road...
What'd they do?
That might...
I can ask, but when I've shown the parameters, I don't think so. I can ask, I have a meeting Thursday with them about mitigation. They'll, they'll pay a certain percent on the total damage. I wish there was more damage to East Shore Road financially because they would have paid for more of the rip wrap swale. So, like I said, I've looked at, I agree with some of them, some of them I don't agree with, it just, there's not enough room and a lot of them are private property and it's always a challenge. Everybody wants a water fix, but they don't want any water coming on their property and permitting. So some of them are very unrealistic, some of them make a lot of sense. And then it's the funding source of being able to do it.
Do you have any preliminary email or anything that you could give to Joe that, from the engineer, that might, you know?
Well, we have the report.
That they're going to release on the 20th?
Yes.
Oh, good.
We have it, I gave it to Joe.
Right. Maybe just reference that.
Yeah, I can, I can ask them, like I said, Thursday and see if it falls into the mail criteria. From what I've read, because I'm searching, I don't think...
They love engineering. Does it affect the commission's budget?
It's from the Conservation Fund, I assume, so it doesn't affect their budget. And it's not a budget, the rest of this is not a budget expense, which is why I told these folks, which is why I brought it to the board for consideration, so. Is it, is it going to break the bank? No, I mean, we could, we could, we could make it work, but I agree, you know, slide's concerned. Testing, testing always sounds good, but it has, in my opinion, should be towards, towards the goal. And obviously, this is in response to a specific issue, so it does make sense, but are we just, to your point, if we already know we need to do something about the phosphorus, we just find out how bad it is? I just would, it's for you to decide if that judgment, it's a judgment call if that value is there or should we just put that $5,000 towards promoting, not fertilizing your lawn or outreach or different things, so. It's really for you to, to gauge. And obviously, we do, we have two lovely water bodies in town, plus the river, so we're going to do this level of testing. We do have the beach there, so the town has, you know, stake in the quality of the lake in addition to just obviously caring about our water, water bodies in general, but we're going to go down with the road for one and then potentially go down for the other water body as well.
Can you give an example to, to rip wrap the swale, fabric and rip wrap the swale on the entire Talbot Hill side of East Shore Road? Sorry, we have brown lane heading towards Christian Hill, it's about $40,000, but because of the damage to East Shore Road, they'll, the percentage is right around $13,500, so I'm going to come up with a bit more or just do a portion of it. But the rip wrap will help with your everyday type erosion, that's the other thing I caution people, is a lot of these repairs for your everyday storm, it's going to be fine if we get another five or a year storm, the rip wraps will probably get taken out of the water. But it will definitely make an improvement to day-to-day erosion, but like I explained, upgrading a 15-inch holder to a 24-inch holder would be nothing for what we experienced last storm, so.
The other question I would have, if I didn't ask you guys, I don't know, I think about it until after, but we were looking at a company from Portland, is there anyone closer that knows that could do this?
Or another set of eyes to be independent?
I'm sorry, what?
So is there anyone else that could do the testing, someone closer versus our?
We kind of talked about that at the Lake Association meeting, I think, but, I mean, it's, it's possible, certainly. But these folks sort of have already, you know, been involved in the whole study and they're familiar with the lake and the issues and all that and the recommendations, so I don't know if it would be...
Yeah, I think we are relying on their expertise. EAI is in town, but they would, what they do, they give you the bottles to test, and I don't know, are you testing it properly? You know, you giving them a water sample, is it done correctly? I know Sproford Lake has worked with this company and had, is going through the same steps that we, has gone through some of these steps already. So they, I guess we're trusting them to do, to give us some information that we feel we need, so.
I just think it's premature. If there's a report, we don't have it, I don't know why we don't have it, but we don't. I think it would, it would be helpful to, to have that, to understand before allocating. I know it's not a lot of money, but, but it opens a box. I personally, I don't see the date, the harm in holding off to see what the report says and make a decision after that. I don't know why the report wasn't shared with us.
Yeah, so we did get a draft.
It was a draft, it was a draft level.
We provided the vet, I don't think we got it back. And I just was looking through to see, and I can't find where we got it back, so I think that's what we're waiting for, is to get, which I knew they were waiting to end of release.
We have, we've just seen the draft.
The draft was sent out prematurely too, there was a miscommunication, the draft wasn't already to go out, it was, it was sent out. The first time I saw it was when Bud sent it to me. So I, like I said, I have a meeting with Thursday, I can inquire if it's something they would consider. I would also, like I said, I would, it's always good to get another opinion as far as cost of the testing and seeing if it was served or not.
I wonder if Annie Ock could do the testing. But EAI, they're certainly testers, if they're just giving you the bottles, they can certainly do the testing.
Oh, no, they, I guess it's specific in terms of, you know, where, what are these spots on the lake you go into?
You're going to the deep hole in particular, location?
You need it to be very consistent. And I'm, I'm almost wondering, I think you defined it, it wouldn't be, it may not be as accurate as what, you know, these people have. More than I know what they're looking for. Even if I was told at this point and like that, I wouldn't trust results as much as I would trust it from an engineer from. We do volunteer testing, and again, I think we're looking for a very accurate snapshot of what's going on at the bottom of that lake.
I think I've taken a walk from the bottom to go up in the middle of the lake and...
That's what they're going to do, yeah. They will rely on, I think, volunteers from, from the lake to take them out, but then they, they go to the deep location in the lake and, and test right there. Because you're, you're figuring out, all right, how much oxygen do you have at the lower levels of the lake and what's happening down there with the phosphorus and the things that are breaking down at the bottom.
And we have started, as a result of this study, we have started to, we purchased the dissolved oxygen piece of equipment and we can measure that more accurately. So, really answer your question, we really, we really want to keep the water quality as pristine as we possibly can. And now it's been degraded because of that storm, also the use. And this study also shows the build-out of what can happen in the next 10 or 15 years, how many properties could be developed within the watershed and what that impact would be. So, yes, after July 20th, I'll make sure that we all have, all community. No, no, meanwhile, Jeff, Jeff will measure you.
One of the things we struggle with, when, on this only word in particular, is what you're talking about development. But if, if some of the recommendations that come out have to do with additional development, it seems that it would be helpful if that information was provided to our plan, who could then present it to the planning board with the idea of putting an overlay on Swansea Lake? And perhaps incorporate it with Wilson Pond as well? Because with that, then some of those expansions may not happen. And as Slide mentioned, we're, we're at 125 feet and one of the, one of the questions I've always had is, where are these septic systems? I would, I would be in favor of allocating $10,000 to locate where the septic systems are, so we could identify which ones are likely to be causing an issue. Because it seems that that's something that we could, we could readily deal with without necessarily going, going this other step. I appreciate that report. And if it's in the afternoon on the 20th, maybe we can attend, but if it's in the morning...
No, it's in the morning. It's right there in the...
Do you have a chance?
We, well, we, we...
Well, the Talbot Hill Road issue, do we want to go there now or do you all want to finish this discussion or?
Well, I think Joe said he doesn't really want to do anything up there because it might make it worse.
Well, no, we don't want to do it, so. It's better now.
Why, she's asking about this. Do we, do we want to make a determination on this and then have a conversation about Talbot Hill Road? I thought we were punting until after.
Okay, so the, the decision is we're going to, you're going to review it next week, perhaps? Okay, that makes sense.
And then give Joe time to look into what he's going to look into, all right? So we'll get some answers there.
I'll ask him if there's any funding source for that.
I, I think we all think it's a big concern and we are, we are, we feel Swansea Lake is the second important thing that we have in Swansea, you know about it. But I, I agree with Billy, it's a little premature. We want more information, I think, to make a decision like this. I, I'd be happy with that. And I'd like to see it come back again to us and we look at it.
Yeah, and at the Conservation Commission, we've had some discussions about the Talbot Hill Road issue, Lake Association has, and I think we'd like to get, kind of put our heads together and see what might be able to be done about that, what the steps could be, whether the town needs to abandon it and then we go to the private landowner. And then, for instance, I used to work with Natural Resource Conservation Service up in Maine, and I managed a property that had a number of eroding logging roads with huge erosion problems. And we were able to get contracts with the NRCS to put those roads to bed. And I, I think that's one of the solutions for the Talbot Hill Road. So if we can get some outside funding that would, and some engineers to come in and say, all right, here's what you're going to do, we hire a contractor, do it, do it. That's, that's one way to get, to tackle that.
I don't think we want to go with the foregone conclusion that Talbot Hill Road's going to be closed off. I think if you present it, as you're saying, it as, as an option for the town to consider.
It's an option, yeah. It's an option and certainly, you know, that there has to be buy-in from the town and from the landowners up there, you know, but that's one, it can, I'm just saying, there are ways to fix the problem and that's one of them.
Either way, and I've heard people talk about it, like I said, I kind of, you leave it on heads for the town people to vote beside. Either way, whether you, to, to either make that function grow, it's going to need a full design or a closed drainage system, full engineering, the same thing would be needed to, to make it a greenway, do the same thing, it'd be a full design and some significant drains. So I think that we would ultimately fall back on, on a vote whether people wanted to discontinue that erosion.
And it depends who's paying for that stuff too.
Absolutely. The one thing I will tell you, like I said, I firsthand, as most of my career in emergency services, one of the things, a very idle thing in that flood was there was no access from Swansea Lake. So if you weren't to put a lot of money into Talbot Hill Road and you were to make a road, now you have another exit coming out of it, that is one thing to consider. But as you saw here, there were 200 or 300 people down in Tullamiamin, they couldn't get out. There was no way to get out. Christian Hill was washed out, Swansea Bay Road was washed out. And so it's one of those things that you're going to invest a lot of money to, to build that back up. That's something to consider.
Yeah, I couldn't get home, so, yeah, it's bad.
Well, Belmont, Belmont washes out a lot, unfortunately.
Belmont Street?
Sure.
Yeah, yeah. It's, it's better. We'll, we'll see, it's better than it was.
It's hopefully not going to be like July, what we did last year.
Every 500 years?
July 10th, right?
July 10th.
The Sunday, even through the rain, like six hours.
Solid, so.
Thank you for your, your time. If you have any other questions before we...
We'll look at, at that report.
Thank you. Thank you guys.
Another environmental group just got price on, because sometimes those prices can be all over the place. Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Nelson, you have it on the agenda.
Nelson had a look at some of them.
Same thing, EAI will split off. So it's not the same as empty?
No. What about Danny Harsd, who does my part?
And EAI, well, Nelson.
He ain't, yeah, Nelson.
But he does his own consulting, so.
Yeah, because he handles a lot, he goes back.
The drone from Kathy Berkstrom?
Oh, yes, sorry about that.
I emailed her.
Yes, you did, I apologize.
Did you guys see the email from Kathy Berkstrom about the drone service?
I looked at it, it showed that, I looked at the footage, it was the dam there in Swansea Lake, a little...
And the Beaver Dam up above.
Okay.
That was, I guess, her point. But she made, brought up a good point as far as marketing. I hadn't seen, it's not doing, it's not doing business in Swansea, was it? On the site where...
Oh, yes, they will have a site out.
I would be in favor of updating their website at the town to have things that show like Safford Drive Industrial Park, you know, the places that they own. And I think the drone footage might be a good market to, to show some of that, but it would probably be through EDAC more than anything. She brought it up, so I just didn't want to discuss it in an email chain, so I can probably bring it up here.
I think EDAC's a good point. Yeah, initially I was kind of with you, Jim, I was kind of like, they're cool pictures, but I wasn't sure what the...
What to do with it?
...town occupation was, but yeah, EDAC.
Which is, she's the chair of the committee. Right. But I mean, things like the web building, when that's done, some of the apartment houses that are just being put up, you fly over and stuff, maybe come over to Safford Drive and maybe show it.
Yeah, I, I, I looked at that today, actually, and I was like, wow, I didn't realize that. You realize a lot more when you look at it from a very tight particular way. You know, I didn't realize that dam and all that. And then Jimmy was up being, Dad, I walked along that with the dog and it's been good stuff.
Do you want to discuss Talbot Hill or wait to see how we make out like that?
Yeah, I guess, either way, if you want to...
Just address the board. So, you know, we've been making pretty good progress on Talbot Hill Road.
You want to make drone footage?
And, and extension, we have a property owner that's rather unique. As you know, I started communicating with him over two years ago and then he just stopped talking with me. Jimmy's been talking to him, had a little bit more success than me, but more of the same, but we're getting to the point where we're probably a week or two weeks worth of small work here and there before paving. And we literally have a bottleneck which could create somewhat of a hazard. He did agree to let us take a tree. I need to move a slope back approximately 8 to 10 feet and... And we're hoping he's gonna come through and come up and take a look at things. But I think we're gonna have a decision if he doesn't, what we want to do. Now, the surveyor, it's gonna take an awful lot of research to determine exactly where the right of way is. The?
Was it seventy feet from the center line?
Yeah, but it's hard to determine, there's no record of whether it's a two rod road, three rod road. And the stone walls are not consistent, so. I need, I need to move a slope and stone wall back around eight feet. It'd be an improvement, only it'd be an improvement for the property owner's property, particularly paved up to his property head. And I've learned from digging up there, there's a reason why the road gets so muddy and it's not only around on Calabale Road. So, yeah, that's kind of where we're at.
My suggestion was, I'd say we do it because it's eight feet, it looks like we do have the right of way. I've had a lot of discussions with this man's life. You know, he's got a lot of issues that of the past fifteen years ago. But I let him know clearly that he had an opportunity before we moved ahead to come down because maybe we could help him out in certain ways, you know, solve that problem. He just is somebody, he's into it and then he goes the other way. But for what Joe wants to do, I think would be okay to do it, in my personal opinion, in talking to this guy. I don't think we're gonna affect his property at all, really.
It's altering a little bit.
If it is indeed outside of the? I don't even think he knows what he's looking at anyways, because he hasn't been here in so many years.
Are the trees dead?
We took a pine tree.
It was a dead pine and then there'd be a couple of small ones.
He gave me permission for that, so. There's a couple of small ones under fifteen inches in diameter that hang out or by law they can pave them. So it'd just be a matter of repositioning the slope and widening the, the top of the hill that's all over the mall.
What's Cordell saying?
Haven't discussed it with him because we don't, we were trying to wait and see if we got either the survey information or the permission, so.
What's the surveyor saying? Is, is it legal as well as?
He, he thinks we wouldn't have an issue with the court at all if we filed or went in that direction because of the safety issue with the road. But he, it would take a lot of work to find out exactly what the right of way is, there is no clear. I think it would be a question for Cordell, I think. Hopefully, we still have hope that he's gonna come up and.
I'm gonna try him again tonight. Like I said, I called him and I, I was getting to him and he was thanking me at the end, you know, thank you for notifying me. And I was very like, you know, we want to work with you. And, and, you know, at first it was, didn't go so great. Then by the end of it, he was like, thanks for your call, Jimmy, this is great, you know, I'll try to get up there. And then I called him again and I told him, you know, we have to get this project done, you need to get here. And he promised me he'd be to meet with us three days ago, two days ago. He's a unique fellow, I mean, that's, I don't know what other word to use for it, but. But Joe stepped off this road, you know, Joe, we counted across this or that. And it just seems like we're right in the legal to do the edging, right, Joe? The way we footed it off, I mean, it, we're not going deep, you know?
The one thing about the, I am like Cordell, after trying, I'm not familiar with the whole process, but when I'm looking at take land, we're looking just to alter the roadside edge of that. Need about another five feet of flat area, six feet of flat area, another drainage, a little slope back.
By any means, it's gonna improve the property like that. It's gonna improve that from what Joe's thinking of doing.
How timely is your problem?
We got a little, we got a little time, I can put the paving off on this till, yeah, October or later. So we do have some time, but I just wanted to bring it to the board's attention.
Take a couple of pictures next time you're up there and I'll sniff the map and then we set those together.
Cordell is?
One of our attorneys.
One surveyor's telling me that it's likely the right of way is fifty feet, the tax map shows it at fifty feet. The other one that came on the map with me, looking at it, he goes back and forth, he's like, I wouldn't be surprised if it's only thirty-three feet, they wouldn't be surprised.
Where would thirty-three feet put you?
Sure.
Well, the road is twenty, right?
Yeah, up top there, it's either around nineteen, so. But it's, the stone walls are a bit straight, drops down.
So we're, we're measuring from, from the edge or we're measuring from the center?
You measure from the center. If you were to go between the two stone walls there, you'd measure from the center because the road's been moved around a lot.
So it'd be sixteen and a half from the center line, maybe?
Maybe.
And you're looking at probably twenty from the center?
If, if it was twenty-five from the center, then what I'm looking to do, I can find. But it would be very, very lengthy process for, for the surveyors to pull up historical records and try to find out. And this will know that back in the day, if that was a road that was just extended a little bit at a time, nothing formal done with it. So they, they warned me that, if you want it, if you want to spend your money. But it's gonna be a lot of work to try establish that.
And then it'd probably help Cordell if you had some historical data from below and above, you know?
The road files are very limited and very lacking. I tried to pull another property survey to see if I could find anything. I pulled some of it up with the surveyor, but hasn't so hopefully.
Ask by Cordell and see what he says.
Get drone photo to help, so.
Well, his photo, where you see it, the beautiful work he's done. And here's this lump of dirt.
Joe.
Hopefully he'll come through, but I think, I think if we don't hear back from him next week, we can check for Cordell.
Because that might take a little bit.
He's talking to you.
My notification.
But I'm just surprised, I, like I said, let me, let me try him again tonight and tomorrow, I'll work on him. He did, this is a, a wind line, he doesn't have a cell phone, he went, he was out traveling with something. And he said in his travels, he was gonna try to come through and ring me and say he's here. But maybe he's back at home and he'll answer that. And I'll give him, you know, the last hurrah and we'll see where I can get with him. And we'll go from there. All right?
I appreciate your help with that.
I'll try to get to that soon as we can, but personally, I think we need to do what Joe wants to do.
Mike, it's a bill you could pay if you want. No, no, opposition up there.
I just said, we said, Mike, you're up, so that's okay, go with it. Turn it on here.
I was just wondering if old man Cox was on that side of the hill too.
Ready?
Because we had to be surveyed a lot probably to make sure what's going on, plus one of our neighbors up there. And a lot of the things that originally were passed through like it was supposed to be on the deeds and stuff. So our trinity's had to rewrite our deed and everything.
Anything else? Public input one more time?
Well, I'll bring up for Wilson Pond.
Where is that?
Later on the corner from you. So the public boat launch, you know how that's huge? I'm sure you guys drive by and see lots of people enjoying it. Not everybody enjoyed it.
Some big people enjoy the sitting here in there.
Well, you know, I don't know, we had a gardener, this girl gave me a right, Joe, I'm guessing you, he must have picked that up today or yesterday.
Yeah, we're too busy to get and try to fix it.
I don't know if it's, if it's soft and it just aged or if somebody was malicious. I know the sign that we put up a couple, I guess it was two years ago for inspecting the boats that's moving over. It's, I really think the town needs to decide whether that is a beach area or not, okay? There's a lot of things that go on. Today I actually went out and brought somebody back who was in a hoo, it was windy this afternoon. Goes for about fifteen miles an hour to my roller station. And there was no way for this person to get back. And it's a thing that's pretty lit up as well, so he wasn't, I'm not sure he was wanting to correction. But it's several times a year we do that. You know, we've already covered numerous, like numerous tubes and things that just float away. We get people swimming, attempting to swim to the island. I was out there yesterday watching somebody about a thirty away and they're like, he wasn't gonna make it, went back. But, you know, there's no armed buoy or anything behind him, so, you know, jet ski or boat can easily, you know, come and clip somebody without paying attention. But it's just, it's a dangerous situation. Also, the amount of debris, I know there's a sign there that says something like, you know, was it no littering, no laws allowed by order of the selectmen? If, if we have enforcement to go by there and see animals there, they, why don't they stop and say, you know, they're not allowed? I mean, there's a reason for that. And that's, you know, what you're doing to the water, right? If that was a public beach, we'd probably have closed them quite often for fetal bacteria because of the animals and stuff like that. I think the town has to be to really make a decision what, what they're, what they want to do there, what they want to allow. As, you know, somebody who lives on, on the pond and represents a lot of people in it, we're somewhat indifferent as long as it's controlled. Swansea Lake, they have a public beach, it's open from eight to eight in the summer. You know, we have people there eight, nine, ten o'clock at night. The houses are much closer to the water, so it's not unusual for somebody to look out and you see somebody literally, you know, twenty feet into the water, you know, at ten o'clock at night. And you're like, are they looking in the windows, what are they doing, right? They might just be fishing, but you just don't know. So there's really a lack of control of what's going on there. And we know we clean up every Sunday, you know, as a volunteer, a volunteer state. And I, I don't want to admit that there was one time somebody felt three nights ago. It's just, it's just not the right thing. So I really would like the town to think hard about what they want to do there. I think, I'm not sure, but I think by law, you need to have public boat access. But for the other stuff that goes on, if there is somebody who wants to get boat in and out, a lot of times they can't because of where people are parked. There's, there's just, you know, I've been trying to back it into the law, but I can quickly get there. I, I just think the town needs to make a decision what to do there. But is a lot of boat, boat?
Yeah, well, with a boat launch like that, you have to be two hundred and fifty feet away before you can swim to the boat launch. And I don't believe that's important.
We have to have one by law.
Public bodies of water of a certain size, I think, have to have access point for watercraft.
And I think it's fine features.
And that was the town to maintain?
Fishing game.
Fishing game.
Same game.
I looked that up recently because somebody asked me, if it's two hundred and fifty feet for the boat launch, you can't swim. You can't have a beach.
So who sets regulations of the, who sets rules? Where did the dog rule come up from? Who did that, the town? Does a sign turn out that says everything?
Someone stated they, there is a sign there.
Who sets the rules for the lake, the pond, or whatever we call this lake?
Well, fishing game sets some and we can set some.
Fishing game sets some?
Right, sets fishing game, because we have to have that boat launch there because it's big enough.
Yeah.
And then all the fishing game laws pertaining to that lake, even though the town owns it.
But I mean, are these decisions up to the, to selectmen?
Well, as far as the, what they call the beach area?
Yeah.
That's the land, so, yeah, I think the selectmen have the authority to set regulations on that area.
I didn't know that.
There might be some research to go to town attorney, make sure we're solid ground.
Do you know that, Mike? Is that what it is?
I believe what Mr. Europe described is correct from my understanding that it's a public beach, it's public property. So in terms of most of the use, it's under the select.
Same with Swansea Lake, that boat launch there?
Yes. The boat launch, not allowed to boat launch. Swansea Lake is controlled by the state.
Right, but it's our property. It's the same idea, it's our property.
The property's ours, but not the lake.
Swansea, it's our property, the, the?
The dam.
Well, the dam is, right?
Right, but you can't swim there.
So if we wanted to make repairs or something, it's us that makes repairs, right?
What I would say, it's gonna be easier to adjust now before we have, you know, another four hundred minutes for the people and, you know, who knows what'll happen.
It is a little chaotic here when you keep parking. When I drive by, somebody will just park along the way and take a lot, I get that. But that's gonna take like somebody maintaining it and being out there all the time. I mean, how do you control something like that?
Somebody will come and they'll just, you know, blast the, you know, loud music. And it just takes away from not only other people using that area, you know, whether it's one or not, but people who are, you know, floating out there, you know, you miss out on the pond, I know he travels. Somebody with a remote control boat, it sounded like it's going a hundred miles an hour, I could walk faster than it. And it just, it's a street noise, I can hear it clearly across the pond in my house.
What's going on?
What rights do they have? They have association, the Wilson Pond Association there?
Yeah, if they want to buy up the property, they can do whatever they want.
You have the association?
There'll be some president there.
So what, what do you have? What are you capable of doing?
Well, we, we own the land.
All right, so you can't really do?
We've got set regulations. What we do is we let test them. We, you know, solicit people to educate, we have the Lake Smart program. And we have social events to keep people talking, so.
And I think a problem for the people that we want to let in anyway, I think most of the problem comes from out of town.
Most of it's out of town, yeah. So that's another thing I'd like you guys to really think hard about. The other thing is related to that, the town property there, and it's not only the boat launch area, but the other area, access areas that the town owns. I'd like you guys to kind of consider and kind of give me the approval to have Lake Smart, like a piece of land, and if you guys report what they find there. It's no different than homeowners. It's a piece of property, border and ward, a body of water. And you guys should know what the state thinks about it and give, give recommendations if you're approving some of it.
Which properties?
Uh, that would be the, what I'm referring to, the boat launch and what I was saying. I don't think you own all of it on thirty-two. I think he's, that is view is weak.
Can you stand on it? I can't get some of the old.
Is it where the swamp is, Joe? Do we own that?
I don't know where the mountains are.
Um, but then there's another access point off of?
Waters Edge.
Yeah, Waters Edge there's one.
There is an access area?
There's several, yeah. I think there's three others.
I need to go first.
Good luck finding one. Some of our people drive by.
Is that right?
Some of the people think we own them, there's no record that we actually do own them. So I think this is probably, it should probably be an agenda item if we're gonna get into, make sure we know what properties we're talking about.
I'm gonna do that in a couple of weeks if you can get it together and?
I'd love to, I think it's important.
Yeah, our next date is September for our next round of Lake Smart coming out. We've had eight properties done this year, we're gonna get another eight done.
When's your big pick then?
August thirty-first.
What do you mean you got eight properties?
So Lake Smart is a, we mentioned a V E F program.
Yeah.
And they come by and they evaluate the property, primarily for things. Move runoff, that way runoff, you're running off in septic. So that makes an issue with us, what the other three things are. And it's an educational process, it's not regulatory, it's, and, you know, you need a public area, you work to meet a boundary and you get a nice couple of signs to get the dogs to, to indicate that. Primary purpose like this is, is to do it. It shows that there's a kind of, it's a part of the private water. So when you go five, four, or whatever, you're going to spend a normal, like a couple of years ago. We're glad that we can get that one.
All right, are the properties still on septic?
I don't think any of them are. It's just on time. Just some town connect.
Trying to think.
No, we're only, is it saying he thinks there might be a couple, or?
Where Chip Adams lives, that used to be, but he hooked up the sewer a few years ago when he remodeled the house.
Yeah, I remember that.
Right around number sixty.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, thank you, Jesse.
So, I mean, we're gonna have the problems, Swansea Lake is having, phosphate is an issue, fertilizing, and especially the rock salt compared to, like, um, class. Test results of this, like, in that this week, which we have for the house.
It's working.
We'll see. The biggest source is the river stream that's coming down, well, the river side is that, that's our biggest issue. Other than maybe we'll come to the property. We work on it continuously. We work on the property and it's continuous.
Those are the ones with the beautiful loans?
Well, they don't even truck up, you know, and don't even know what they want. You don't know, it's natural, they want to rip the lake at all.
Going to the dam tomorrow, take a day off.
You're shut down, you're, our shit down.
Immediately, definitely, maybe, huh?
So, I've got a very bad question. Where are we at with the chairs?
Where are we at with the chairs?
These are pretty nice.
I mean, I, I left that a month ago, you know, and we had enough time for... We appointed you to the chair study committee, and then you disappeared.
Who's the chair of the chair committee?
He never called.
You know what? There's enough here, so when we have planning, we'll, I mean, we each have one.
Jason, keep in the dizzies, so that's what's happening.
Tom, look, someone else, teach a piece of equipment now.
Yeah.
If there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Sure. Motion made. Second, and all in favor, say aye. Aye, aye, so, thank you, everybody.